All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board. I am calling this meeting at 7:02. We have a public hearing first. The public is invited to call for the public hearing at 603-766-5646. Enter participant code 685562 if you wish to make a public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Please wait for the chair's instructions and then press star nine. Your microphone will be unmuted and you will be directed to state your name and address prior to making your public comment. You can also email your public comment to Denise.Moran@SAU19.org prior to 3 o'clock this afternoon. Please indicate in the public comment, "March 1st, 2021, Goffstown School Board Meeting", in the subject line, and include your name and address and limit your comments to no more than 500 words. The Board reserves the right to read your public comment during the meeting, however, any public comment will be included in the official meeting minutes. The Board meeting can be viewed on GTV 16 on demand and will also be streamed live on the GTV YouTube channel. So if everybody can stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janelle, are you there?
She's there.
I am, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna take attendance, Janelle O'Brien. Can you just say if you're here and alone?
Here.
Okay, thank you.
Here and alone.
All right, so we have a public hearing. Scott, Brian?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick introduction and then I'll have Mr. Gross speak to this. This is a good thing for us to be able to do this. We are having a public hearing to accept funds from the USDA National Lunch Program through an equipment grant, and specifically, I believe that we were the recipient of a steamer unit that was an approximate value of around, what's got, $8,000 or $9,000?
Almost 10, actually. It was $9,608.
So Scott, you want to just give us a little bit of...
Yeah, there really isn't a whole lot to this. Our steamer unit here at the high school broke and essentially we needed to replace it, and Megan Bizarro, our food service director, applied for a grant through the USDA Equipment Program, and she was successful in getting that. So the grant paid for the replacement steamer unit. Because it's over $5,000, we hold a public hearing, and then the Board would accept the grant so that we could then expend, you know, expend the funds for this. So that's really it. It's just a kind of a simple thing. Great job on Megan's part for applying for it.
And Scott, I would just add that this meeting, this public hearing, was appropriately posted. Mrs. Moran put it in the union leader. We had it posted, so we complied with all of the requirements. So we'd be happy to answer any questions, but again, great work to our great food service director, Megan Bizarro, for finding this almost $10,000 grant that allowed us to replace that broken piece of equipment.
Right, thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Ellen?
If you're okay, I'll make a motion.
Did anybody have any questions before I take her motion? See and none, go ahead, Ellen.
Yes, I move that we approve the acceptance of the USDA Equipment Grant.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any other discussion?
Before you vote, just to let the viewers know that there is nobody on the conference bridge line who wishes to make a public comment during the public hearing, just so you're aware.
Okay, yeah, that was next.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Scott. All right, see and no discussion, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. All right, so now we open the public comment, but there's none for the hearing. Scott?
There isn't anyone on the public comment line.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
By Jared, do I have a second? By Jenny, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, we're adjourned. All right, so now we're gonna open up to the Goffstown School Board Meeting, and if you can all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the same rules apply. If somebody wants to call in a public comment, the same phone number for the school board meeting. So the first on our agenda is to go over the February 15th, 2021 Board Minutes. Everybody look over them, see anything? Ellen?
Do you need a motion before revisions, or should I...
Well, I wanted to see if there's any changes before a motion.
Yeah, I had two possible.
Yeah, did anybody see anything?
Yeah.
You did? Go ahead.
Hold on, I gotta find it. On page four, the second paragraph, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th line starts with "younger children".
Yep.
Says "younger children", I think it should say "do not attend".
Right.
So cross the N out.
Okay.
And on page five, halfway down, starts with my name.
Uh huh.
Bring back the special ed and at-risk kids who may or may not be identified, but there are children who are at risk.
At-risk students?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's all I saw.
Anybody else see anything? All right, does somebody make a motion to approve the minutes? Go ahead, Ellen.
I move to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2021.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? By Jenny, any other discussion? Okay, see and none, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Correspondence?
None.
None?
None.
Okay, accommodations, good news?
We just got back from February vacation, as you're probably aware. Not much to report on, and...
Right.
Everyone enjoyed vacation, gave teachers and students a chance to relax.
Good, yeah, everybody needed that. Anybody else? Yes, Scott?
All right, so speaking for someone who is lucky to break 150 while bowling and ten pin, our bowling team broke the state record in terms of total pins for a match.
Wow.
This past weekend, and one of their bowlers averaged a, over two set, two strings, averaged 250 pins, which is like crazy.
That's amazing.
And another bowler, I think, had a high score of like 260-something. I mean, these numbers are like, I still watch a lot of bowling when I was younger, I mean, that is like crazy good.
Yeah.
So, you know, congratulations to the bowling team, and, you know, Justin, you'll probably talk later, but just, you see those numbers, it's just mind-numbing how good that is.
And remarkable coach.
Yeah.
So Keith Martin, who's our coach, this volunteer position, who has given so much to that team and built this program, and, you know, they won the championship last year, right? Wasn't it last year?
Individual.
So they've had an incredible program that he's built. So again, many thanks to Mr. Martin and everyone who's a part of that.
That's great. Anyone else? Accommodations, good news? All right, see and none, move on to public comment. Scott, do we have anyone?
No, we don't.
All right, I have some letters that I do need to read for public comment that I received over the last few days. The first one is from Megan McDonald, she's from New Boston. Dear Goffstown School Board, I have a student at GHS, and I'd like to offer these considerations about moving to Phase 3 of reopening. While I remain concerned that moving to three-foot separation with masks while seated during classroom instruction represents a significant increased risk of virus transmission, I am even more concerned about potential virus transmission while students are eating and drinking. How can it be safe for 20 teenagers to be unmasked eating in the same classroom? This would not currently be allowed in New Hampshire restaurants. What accommodations will be made for teachers and other staff during lunch periods and snacking in classrooms? Regarding switching between in-school and remote, many students are not comfortable with the current exposure to peers in their classes, especially when unmasked during times when students are eating and drinking. In addition, many students have poorly fitting masks and/or incorrectly worn masks. Students who were and remain uncomfortable with the current safety protocols likely chose the hybrid model at the beginning of the year, feeling it was a bearable compromise between safety and getting the classes they need to continue their education plans. It will be almost impossible now for hybrid students to switch to remote without significantly sacrificing academically. The online academy just does not have the resources to offer the full breadth of college preparatory classes, world languages, prerequisites, or graduation requirements that many students are currently taking. So those students would have no choice but to stay in school despite their level of discomfort with the reduced safety protocols. That creates more social and emotional stress, not less. Additionally, it seems reasonable to assume that there will still be positive COVID cases, and with students closer together, more will be required to quarantine. So instead of getting more in-person, direct instruction, they will be completely at home. Lastly, the relatively cost benefit of Phase 3 is different for the high school than for the elementary, middle schools for the following reasons. The burden on parents of elementary school students is far greater than of high school students. High school students can act more independently than younger students. The educational losses resulting from online instruction for elementary and middle school students are far greater than for high school students. Teens are far more likely to understand and care about the increased risk associated with Phase 3, and therefore will suffer increased emotional stress. The relative health risks posed by COVID-19 are lower for younger students than for teens. The current hybrid and remote models, while far from ideal, are working for most people. We are about 60% through the school year and will be further along than that given everything that would need to happen before more students could be in the building at the same time. Please consider leaving the high school as it is for the remainder of the year, regardless of what may need to change at the elementary level. Thank you, Megan. The second letter is from Jenny Bouzoy. I have serious concerns regarding the survey that was sent out to us on Friday and the decisions that may result from it. I, along with my husband and 15-year-old freshman, completed the survey that day and submitted it. After the fact, I emailed her high school principal, assistant principal, dean of students, and her guidance counselor. I don't like that it was sent to us at the start of a break when we are supposed to be relaxing and not thinking about school, but it needed to be completed by yesterday, so it was done. It also didn't have a comment section, hence the email. Mr. McBride and Mrs. McCann suggested we also email the school board urging that our voices be heard. Sophia is a straight A freshman that is attending high school as a hybrid learner. She has a 504 plan and also suffers severe asthma and takes meds daily to control it, as well as carries a rescue inhaler. She knows the school nurses well, she makes her own mask and has no issues wearing them to school on Mondays and Wednesdays, her cohort days, and when we have to go out. She works well in her Google Classroom on Tuesdays and Thursdays and work on self-advocacy in her 504 plan, emailing her teachers when she needs help. On Friday, she attends all of her Zoom classes. As it is my day off from school, I hear her own verbally participating in her classes. She is thriving and has not been sick since the beginning of the school year when she transitioned into school. I am an SLP in a neighboring district. I am significantly immune compromised and have been working remotely for the last year. I am now vaccinated and have been cleared to go back to my autistic and intellectually disabled middle schoolers on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and I am over the moon. All of this being said, we are not okay with the possible decisions to go back now, in March, five days per week. We want the option of staying hybrid. We do not want all or nothing. She will not be okay remotely, and medically, she cannot go back five days per week. I am working with the dean of student now because of a student in a class of six students that cannot keep his mask on. What happens when there are primarily 20 and only a distance of three feet? Teachers need to be able to teach, not manage these behaviors as well. I do not blame this teacher at all. Goodness, they have so much on their plates already. Now add this, just this week over break, there have been daily emails of cases reported. Please leave it alone, please. If five days per week is considered, make it an option, like remote is an option, and send a survey to your teachers if you haven't already, and listen to them. Not all districts do. Keep hybrid an option. I need you to consider the mental health as well as the medical health of students like my daughter. She is not old enough to be vaccinated, and there is no vaccine for her. Respectfully, Jennifer. And then the last one is from Douglas Lelo. Goffstown School Board, I am hopeful that you will soon be ready to start teaching our children with in-person learning five days a week. As a father of two girls in the Goffstown school system and also working as a nurse practitioner at a New Hampshire State Hospital, I have witnessed firsthand the detriments of this crisis we are in. I no longer see this as a COVID crisis, but more so an educational crisis. It is imperative to start teaching our children again. Children need to get back into their normal routines and safely socialize again with their friends. At New Hampshire Hospital last week, we had to quickly open 10 beds for the backlog of children waiting to get into Hampstead Hospital. The waitlist for some of these kids and adolescents is now in the twenties. It is often easily forgotten that many of our schoolchildren are suffering from anxiety and depression, the longer this goes on. Community spread inside the walls of our schools is now lower than the spread in the community. Essentially, schools are safer, it's that simple. There is simply no reason teachers cannot teach safely with proper social distancing and mask-wearing. Vaccines will come in the near future, but that should not prevent teachers and kids going back to school right away. At the very first board meeting, you agreed in a stepwise approach, Mr. Bulkey. Now is the time to get our children back in school. Sincerely, Douglas. So I thank everybody for writing to us with their questions and concerns. Later on the agenda, we will be discussing Phase 3 and updates and stuff. All right, so if public comment is done, I'll close that. Brian?
Okay, well, we're gonna have Mr. Huff do a presentation on spring athletics, but before we do, we have a little special treat that we'd like to share with the Board and with the community.
For so long, Adam McKeon has been an incredibly important person within this town. As his time as GTV coordinator, Adam has helped broadcast hundreds of sporting events for the high school, countless events for the other schools, including MVMS band and chorus performances, and the Halloween parade that everyone loves for Maple Ave. Without Adam, this town would probably be a whole lot different. Without Adam, public access would probably be a whole lot different. The effort and time and commitment that he has put in is second to none. He's helped grow this station from what seemed like the bottom up, and along with it, this town, this community, and this school. He's been recognized across the nation as one of the best coordinators and one of the best public access stations in the country. As he moves on from Goffstown, from New Hampshire, from New England, and makes his way down to Florida, we'd like to wish him all the best. As Adam McKeon is someone who has strived to get everyone involved, not only watching these broadcasts, but participating in them, volunteering, working, he did everything he could. He got everyone involved, parents, athletes, students, and even family. And I should know this the best. On behalf of myself, everyone else in this town and this community, I'd like to thank Adam McKeon for all the hard work, time, and commitment he's put into our community, our town, and our school. We wish you the best of luck, and thank you once again. Love you, Dad.
Thank you, Adam.
Well done, Broden.
Yes.
Well done.
Nicely done.
If Broden's staying here...
And if that doesn't get you, as a dad, I don't know what...
Yeah, right?
Is Broden staying?
So we have a little gift, and I think we should, you know, can we get a close-up here, Broden? I think it feels appropriate.
Are close-ups appropriate right now?
Camera, out of camera.
Do you want me to open it for you?
Yeah, you have to wear it.
Open it.
Turn it around, there you go.
There we go.
Very good.
Nicely done.
Reggie White's number, that's what. This is awesome, thank you so much. That video, like, it's a little dusty in here, so I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
We're gonna miss you, Adam.
Yes, for the whole town, Will.
Yep.
Definitely.
And thank you, Broden, great job.
Yes, thank you, Broden. All right, so...
Okay, so we'll transition now into our athletics, our spring athletics presentation, and I will hand it off to Mr. Huff.
Thank you, Brian. Just sort of echo what people were saying about Adam, certainly gonna be a big miss to our community, but it's just been great working with him the last number of years. We'll miss you, but really, just love what you've done for our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I am here to talk about spring sports. I will move quickly, and we do, what we, we do have what we didn't have in the past, which is a little more to go on based on now having been through two seasons worth of running interscholastic athletics, so I think I can give us a reasonable view of kind of what we expect the spring to look like, should we be allowed to go in that direction. So the proposal for spring athletics would be start date of March 29th, that would be the first day of practice, which would be tryouts basically for most teams. The first date to play games would be two weeks after that, we're looking at April 12th as a start date. We would expect games to be more or less within cohorts. There will be the similar thing to the winter where our ice hockey team played more of, did not play as much of a regional schedule. The sport of lacrosse, we're gonna look to do the same way as athletic directors, but we try to keep it more competitive. Just those types of sports, we would rather, if we tried to stay too local, we could end up in a bracket where we're playing a lot of teams that we're just not on the same competitive level with. We expect that baseball, softball, and tennis will be playing more local. A sport like lacrosse, we would like to have the ability to find likewise opponents throughout the state. Just as a review, these are the spring sports that we offer at Goffstown High School. Baseball, softball, boys and girls lacrosse, and all those sports have a varsity and a junior varsity level. Tennis, we offer boys and girls tennis. Last year, we did not have enough interest to field a boys tennis team. We're certainly looking to see if we have the interest for this year, but if not, we would proceed at least with the girls tennis team. For track, we offer boys and girls outdoor track in the spring, and then we have boys' volleyball varsity and junior varsity.
Which is the only indoor sport this spring, is boys volleyball?
So it really does mirror the fall, where in the fall was, the girls volleyball team was the one indoor sport, and the spring will be the boys volleyball is the one indoor sport.
And Justin, just in terms of the one indoor sport, you would conduct boys volleyball very similar to how you did girls volleyball?
I...
With the exception of, we originally had the girls practicing outdoors.
Correct, so, and we used the softball field for that, so that, that part of it wouldn't be doable, but otherwise, as far as being the indoor sports, yes.
But consistent with what you've done this winter.
No locker room usage, masks at all times.
Yep.
The stuff that we found worked in the fall with girls volleyball, yep.
Thank you.
This kind of shows, it's the same update I've provided the last couple of times we've met, so we are currently in Phase 5 now of entering postseason play for our winter teams. The proposal would be to move on March 29th back to Phase 3, I'm sorry, Phase 2 for the spring sports. So we're kind of skills and drills, meeting as teams. We would eventually start to move on to Phase 3, would be at the conclusion of tryouts. And at that time, we are now moving on to team-wide drills in development. Phase 4 would be interscholastic, where we play against other teams, and in Phase 5, end of May and into June, would be postseason, and that's where we talked about, we may be going outside of our regional cohort a little bit more. Put some of my initial spring thoughts here, these do really mirror the winter thoughts the last number of years. We'll miss you, but really, just love what you've done for our community, so thank you.
Thank you.
So I am here to talk about spring sports. I will move quickly. And we do, what we, we do have what we didn't have in the past, which is a little more to go on based on now having been through two seasons' worth of running interscholastic athletics. So I think I can give us a reasonable view of kind of what we expect the spring to look like, should we be allowed to go in that direction. So the proposal for spring athletics would be start date of March 29th. That would be the first day of practice, which would be tryouts basically for most teams. The first date to play games would be two weeks after that. We're looking at April 12th as a start date. We would expect games to be more or less within cohorts. There will be the similar thing to the winter where our ice hockey team played more of, did not play as much of a regional schedule. The sport of lacrosse, we're gonna look to do the same way as athletic directors, but we try to keep it more competitive. Just those types of sports, we would rather, if we tried to stay too local, we could end up in a bracket where we're playing a lot of teams that we're just not on the same competitive level with. We expect that baseball, softball, and tennis will be playing more local. A sport like lacrosse, we would like to have the ability to find likewise opponents throughout the state. Just as a review, these are the spring sports that we offer at Goffstown High School. Baseball, softball, boys and girls lacrosse. And all those sports have a varsity and a junior varsity level. Tennis, we offer boys and girls tennis. Last year, we did not have enough interest to field a boys tennis team. We're certainly looking to see if we have the interest for this year, but if not, we would proceed at least with the girls tennis team. For track, we offer boys and girls outdoor track in the spring. And then we have boys volleyball varsity and junior varsity.
Which is the only indoor sport this spring is boys volleyball?
So it really does mirror the fall where in the fall was, the girls volleyball team was the one indoor sport. And the spring will be the boys volleyball is the one indoor sport.
And Justin, just in terms of the one indoor sport, you would conduct boys volleyball very similar to how you did girls volleyball?
I.
With the exception of make, we originally had the girls practicing outdoors.
Correct, so and we use the softball field for that, so that, that part of it wouldn't be doable. But otherwise, as far as being the indoor sports, yes.
But consistent with what you've done this winter.
No locker room usage, masks at all times. The stuff that we found worked in the fall with, with girls volleyball, yep.
Thank you.
This kind of shows, it's the same update I've provided the last couple of times we've met. So we are currently in Phase Five now of entering postseason play for our winter teams. The proposal would be to move on March 29th back to Phase Three, I'm sorry, Phase Two for the spring sports. So we're kind of skills and drills, meeting as teams. We would eventually start to move on to Phase Three would be at the conclusion of tryouts. And at that time, we are now moving on to team-wide drills in development. Phase Four would be interscholastic where we play against other teams. And in Phase Five, end of May and into June would be a postseason. And that's where we talked about, we may be going outside of our regional cohort a little bit more. Put some of my initial spring thoughts here. These do really mirror the winter thoughts that we had as far as the weekly check-ins that we've been having with the administrative team here. There have been absolutely times that we have had hiccups this winter. And I think we've addressed those effectively. But it really has to be on a, you know, I say weekly, sometimes it's more than that. Sometimes it's a couple of times a week. Very rarely will I come in on a Monday and not be looking to speak to Frank in particular here, the principal, about kind of what our status is. And then as the weeks go along, as the week goes along, kind of evaluating where we're at. I could see us doing the same thing in the spring as far as, you know, if there's, if there's no issues, great, there's no issues. But the fall, most of our teams were able to get, kind of start to finish without a hiccup. In the winter, that hasn't always been the case, and in the spring, I think it'll be a mix. But I think we'll address those as they've come up. This slide is just, it shows a COVID-19 course that's on the NFHS Learn website that I would ask all of our spring coaches to take. It's a half hour long, does a nice job of kind of summarizing how to administratively deal with team athletics during COVID-19. What we're looking at, spring sports at large would be spacing out practices in a physical sense as far as the better, we can do distancing, the better it is for everybody. There's a time at which that is not always the best practice, but whenever possible, we look to space them out. We would also look to space out timing intervals. With spring, there's not as much of the space crunch being outdoors. So we don't have to, like this winter, we've been able to do the staggered times, having time to clean in between and all that, and I think that's worked well. We will keep the philosophy in for the spring, but I don't think it'll be as much of a crunch. What I did like about winter and that I'm gonna continue to push for spring would be that coaches must insulate themselves in terms of being contact trace proof. So if there's a case on a team, I want that coach to be able to to assert that they are not a close contact. And that's something I've been able to monitor in the winter and I'll continue to do that in the spring. And then moving on to face coverings. For the indoor sport, absolutely face coverings. Outdoor, there was actually a Sports Medicine Committee meeting this afternoon at the NHI AA. And they did release that, I think they're recommending face coverings for everything except for pole vault and hurdling. I think, I see the logic in that, and I think my recommendation would be that we move ahead with those recommendations. They do come from a national organization, which is then filtered to the state organization. On the next slide, I talk about what practically speaking, mask use might look like. And to be honest, I'm not 100% on this, and I would be curious what people's thoughts are. If you picture an outfielder in baseball in particular, that's an obvious one. You know, a player runs out to right field, do they need to have their mask up? I would, I would like to be able to say, they probably don't. So if there's a way to define this, to allow flexibility, I would like to have that. I get that being flexible can create its own issues. And I don't want to do that, so I would kind of put that out there as far as, is there a way to have that? I've seen other districts I've talked to have said you could define it in terms of if your position that you're playing allows for mask breaks, you can take them. That could be true of a lacrosse goalie, of a lacrosse defenseman that the ball's in the offensive zone. Though you do need to mark an opponent, you may not be within six feet. So I guess part, the first question would be, do we want to go down that road? Do we want to just keep it cut and dry? I can make a case for that, but I would also like to use common sense if, if there's an opportunity to. So I might, maybe we can come back to that if we wanted.
Yeah, I would also say, Justin, as a regional superintendents group, we haven't talked about spring athletics yet, so I think that that would also be an appropriate
Understood.
conversation, certainly amongst the ADs, but as between the superintendents as well. You know, baseball, some of these are gonna look different. You know, baseball, certainly your example of being out in right field is a good one. But lacrosse, when your offense, defense, you know, they're, they're in close proximity, so we could talk more about it. I would tend to give less flexibility.
We will not be using locker rooms, that's been consistent really throughout the school year. Goffstown student athletes that are in school during that school day, they could leave their belongings in the locker room. So in the morning, some students will come in, place their belongings there, we'll keep them locked up for the day. At the end of the school day, we stagger teams in, so the baseball team might come in for the first seven minutes, the track team comes in for the next seven minutes. And students that were in school that day have the ability to change into their, their athletic clothes. Anybody who was not in school that day comes to practice fully dressed. That's been effective, and I would like to continue that. And then as an AD group amongst Division One ADs, they've talked about not allowing away fans to come to events at least for the beginning of the season. That would take us, if you picture through the end of April vacation, and it may be a week beyond that, that people would like to keep it that way. And then they will, will have another meeting and discuss potentially allowing fans to go to away games. That's consistent with the fall, we did not allow away fans. I personally think that we could handle it, and I, I'm in favor of people being able to go and watch our children. But I do think it's also good to be a good member school, and if that's the wisdom of our group, I would like to go with that. Mountain View Athletics would look, again, pretty much the same. We would like to start at the end of March, right into that Phase Three, Phase Two and Phase Three where we're doing by team first, skills and drills, progressing to team-wide stuff, and then moving on to interscholastic athletics. What will, scrimmages, we will keep intrasquad only, we will not scrimmage against other schools prior to the season starting. Schedule will be regionalized in the cohort model as best as possible. At the Mountain View level, that has been a little bit easier to do as far as you will face the same teams throughout the season. It's not always within the 10-mile radius that sometimes we've been able to do at high school, but there is generally a cohort of some sort. I do think that transportation will continue to be an issue. That may impact the ability of Mountain View to play a full schedule, will likely need to rely on families to drive their, their children to games. We've been able to do that in the fall and in the winter. So my hope would be that we could do that again in the spring. If relief comes, if we're able to get more bus drivers, terrific. But right now, I don't think that's where we would be at. Related to that, would propose to just continue with the, the policy of not requiring that student athletes ride the bus, pretty much for that reason, that we may not be able to play games otherwise. And in situations where we have a bus at times, it's helpful. If a student is able to get a ride with a parent, that's one less student on the bus, and it does help with distancing a little bit on the buses. And then just to sum it up, obviously, we want to continue to be able to offer opportunities for our students. I certainly feel it's beneficial for them. We feel that interscholastics, we can do this in as safe an environment as is possible. And that we've demonstrated that we can and will ensure student safety by taking appropriate actions when necessary. And that comes back to the, you know, looking at the fall and the winter and the differences and, you know, I think that we've been prudent and we've been able to have a lot of success stories with, while mitigating risk and then dealing with the, the stuff that comes up as it comes up.
Does anybody have any questions for Justin? Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Ms. Jared. Justin, just from, from the winter sports, I know that there was hiccups. What are some of the lessons learned that we're trying to apply into our spring sports from those lessons learned?
I think that the big one is really grateful that we were able to keep the coaches contact proof. I think that was an important thing, I think Brian brought that up even toward the end of the fall season. And I think committing to that was a, was a wise move that really helped us. The attendance at practice, the fact that keeping our coaches on that, it was a little easier in the winter because we had everything filmed. So we were able to film our practices so we know, you know, which students are present. But being diligent about having your attendance daily, done on a daily basis, I think really helps with contact tracing. And then I think, I think people are just getting a little more familiar with what that looks like as far as the contact tracing. And I know it's not a unique thing to athletics, it's just anytime you're asking people to account for what they're doing inside a school, outside a school, during every break, it's, it's a bit much, and I think we're getting better at them while we do it.
Thank you.
I had a request more so than a question. When, if we approve this, could you email all your parents with all the expectations of what their player is supposed to do, what the rules are for if they go to a game, if, you know, that type of thing? Because I know in the winter, it kind of went to the players with the expectation the players would tell the parents. And that doesn't always happen, and I think there was a break in communication there. So if we could just let our families know of students that are gonna participate, what the expectations are. I think that might help a little bit.
That makes sense.
So you would like an answer tonight?
Yeah, my recommendation to the board is at this point, we, we did fall, we did winter. Winter was the hardest season to do during the worst COVID case counts that we've had. Justin has been an incredible leader for, for all of our athletics here at the high school as well as at Mountain View. Has my complete trust. And we would recommend that the board approve. If the board needs any additional information, we have time that you, you could not make a decision this evening if you required more information to be brought forward. But, you know, I, I think at this point, spring is easy. Winter was hard. Fall was hard, particularly because we were still, as a society, learning so much about COVID, how to deal with it, how to run schools, how to do everything. You know, I, I feel at this point like, like we've got this down. Justin has this down, the, the high school and the middle school have this down. So my recommendation would be to approve the, the presentation as requested.
Does anybody, go ahead, Jenny. Are you suggesting that we approve this with limited mask taking on and off?
I, I think at this point, what I might recommend to the board is some of those finer details, let us work out administratively. You know, so for example, I'm fine with all athletes wearing masks, but what I don't want, and having watched fall athletics and some other, is, you know, kids that are wearing masks, but they're down around their chins. You know, again, I think we need to have a reasonable expectation that if you're playing in the outfield, I recognize that that's different than if you're the catcher and you're right by the person batting. You know, so we need to recognize that it's not all the same, but, you know, it's habits. If these kids want to play, they're motivated to play. And if we tell lacrosse players or tennis players or whoever, you need to wear a mask to play, they will do it because they want to play. So I, I think let us work out some of those details. I also think, you know, when you think about getting into the April time period, a month is a long time. You know, in a month from now, we could be dealing with case counts that are well below 100. Or we could be dealing with one of these variant strains. You have the South African strain, the United Kingdom strain, you have the Brazil strain, and there's now this fourth California. One that's, that's, you know, emerged. So, you know, I, I think we'll continue to see improvements, particularly as more people get vaccinated. So I, I think let us work out some of those finer details. And I would absolutely find myself on the side of being more cautious rather than less. So, you know, lacrosse players, you don't want to wear a mask, well, don't play. But if you're playing singles tennis, I think we need to be reasonable that singles tennis is, is a different level of risk than, you know, girls playing lacrosse or... Justin, I wanted to ask, does it look promising to be able to have spring track events, recognizing that they're outdoors? We're not reliant upon accessing the University of New Hampshire systems, you know, facilities. Are you feeling like we'll be able to have meets for the kids?
Yes, absolutely. So we're proceeding with scheduling weekly meets hopefully. And then we do see a divisional meets at the end of the season are already being planned out.
Great. And would you think similar to what you've done over on the track here at Barnard? Where you might do like just two schools instead of larger meets?
Yes, if we were to host one, in the past few years, Coach Grattan's put on, has really done a great job hosting.
Terrific job.
Winter each year.
Yep.
So that's gone well, whereas it's been us and one other team. I think we could do that at Barnard Park, I'm not sure we could do more than that. But other teams are pretty gracious about allowing us to come to their places as well.
Go ahead, Terry. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done? Okay, go ahead.
Just a question for you. Is there any concern or restrictions or thoughts around the students playing for the schools and then playing for rec league outside of the school athletics?
I, I would treat this more like the fall where we didn't really have, have that same concern. You know, winter, I think we do and did, and I think justifiably so. When we get to outdoor, I don't think it's as urgent. And I, I know that, you know, talking to Rick Olhoney at the Parks and Rec here, they're trying to get their programs up and running for the spring. They really want to be able to offer stuff to the community. And I know there's some concern out there that people don't want to commit to signing up for tryouts at the schools if they would not be allowed to play the Parks and Rec league, for example. So I, I would very much like to be able to, to allow them to do that. Unless somebody feels the other way, which is what we did in the fall.
To allow them to do both? Is that what we just said?
There, there's a lot less kids that play beyond. You can probably have some AAU baseball kids. You might have some lacrosse kids that play on.
Yeah, they don't tend to play in season, especially baseball because of the pitching hours. So it's, it's really not a, it's a supplemental season, it doesn't happen at the same time. Lacrosse, especially at Mountain View, I know a lot of those kids could play Parks and Rec for Goffstown as well. So we would like to be able to allow them to do that.
Sure, and that, that's sort of where my question was, stemming from, I've been asked that a number of times now.
Yes, I have as well.
Alan?
Are there any travel teams and leagues and things that the kids would be restricted from? I remember in the fall, we were talking about the kids, I think we said could not be a part of a travel team.
That was more winter.
Yeah, that was, we were concerned about the winter, Ellen, that kids would play on multiple basketball leagues and, and, you know, and ice hockey, you know, some of those kinds of things.
So we don't have that with the spring?
We don't have the same level, I mean, obviously, there's always concern, there's always risk, it's a global pandemic. But, you know, in terms of kids being outdoors, the transmissibility of the virus outside as opposed to inside, we, we don't have as many concerns, so, you know, really, I would, I would have Justin, you know, proceeded his discretion.
And it was the same in the fall?
Right.
We feel that being outdoors is really the game changer. With the winter being indoors, we want to be cautious about that.
And I, I play boys volleyball, and club season is over once school season comes around. So there won't be anybody playing across two teams in the one indoor sport.
Okay, that's good to know. So is there, go ahead.
Would you see any other teams that would have kids that were on multiple teams?
I, I think the lacrosse, they'll play on the town, town team at times.
For, for middle school kids? High, high school kids aren't, you know, unless they're playing tomahawks or something like that, they're, they're likely not playing on other teams.
Right, and tomahawks doesn't run their league during the.
School season.
School season because they want all their kids playing this.
Yeah, I, I don't think, Ellen, it might be more of an issue for middle school kids that are, you know, really into athletics, they might want to play on multiple teams. But I, I think for high school kids in season, I don't think that's gonna be, I don't think that'll be an issue. Certainly not like we were concerned about winter.
Right, and the lacrosse middle school is just rec with our town, right? Is there other?
Right, so there's a middle school team that does compete against other schools. There's a, a town rec program, they will play other towns at times, but it's all Goffstown.
But it's all Goffstown kids.
New Boston kids on our, on the Goffstown team. But it's really been a great program and just, you know, Parks and Rec just does a tremendous job supporting us year-round.
Right, and that's a girls and boys team that the rec has for lacrosse.
Yep, so they very much, their lifeblood is being able to, to offer this to our students, so we want to be able to share athletes where it makes sense in that setting where it's all outdoors.
So does anybody have any further questions? Are we ready to make a motion to put this forward, or do you want to wait two weeks?
Sounds like some of the details are still being worked out, at least from a masking perspective.
Well, that'll, that's gonna be updated.
Yeah, I, I don't think probably very much. I'm, I'm likely not to be very flexible. Justin would probably be more flexible than I would be. So the, the more I'm involved, probably the more restrictive it'll be. You know, it's, these kids want to play, that's the expectation. And that's, as far as I'm concerned, that's it. And you start to give flexibility, and the more flexibility you to give, sometimes teenagers sometimes take advantage of those things. So I, I would tend to probably be more strict.
Did you have a question, Ellen, or something?
Yes, my, I voted yes for the fall because of the outside. I wasn't here to vote on the winter, which I would have voted no on that. Because it's inside. This is outside again, and we have better numbers for the COVID. I guess I'm a little hung up on, we don't know if we're opening school. And I kind of, Tim's words from way back in the fall keep coming back to me about, here we are opening up and allowing athletics. And I'm hoping we're also allowing the after-school clubs and that kind of stuff to be happening as well. Not knowing if we're opening our school up this spring, kind of bothers me that we continue with opening athletics and may or may not be opening for school. And I know school's inside, so I'm having a little bit of trouble weighing that. Well, I'll listen to you folks.
Jared, go ahead.
Well, no, just based off of Ellen's statement, and I'm in concurrence with her. If we maybe table this decision until after we get the presentation from the COVID-19, I think if we can at least understand that, I think this decision for sports might be a little bit easier for some individuals.
You mean later this evening?
Yes, later this evening, after the review that we have in the agenda.
I think that's fair.
Jenny? You're not going to say anything? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we want to table this discussion until later. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Is that by consensus?
It's.
We'll vote on it later?
Well, I have a hard time saying we could do fall and winter, and then we have no idea, you know, not to do spring. Our schools are open, they're not open 100%, and we are working hard to do that. So I'll do whatever you guys want to do, we can wait till later, but I say we can do spring sports.
I will make my comment. I think what a lot of people don't understand is the large problem with opening up schools completely also, I'm like, I'm for it. I would open up schools tomorrow if we could. A big problem that we have, if you look at our graphs that we post every meeting, is staff. Like, staff is a huge issue for us. And yes, kids are safe in school, and they don't transmit all that much. But if we don't have staff in our schools to take care of them, then that's, I mean, we can't run schools without staff. And that's an ongoing problem for us. So that's where we really have to kind of be a little bit careful and think about how we're going to take care of that problem. And we really have done a lot of kind of creative things to try and get more staff in all the time, so that we can have the appropriate amount of staff here. And we have teachers that are teaching extra classes. We have principals that are teaching extra classes. We're doing all kinds of things to open up schools as much as we can. But as much as everybody says children are safe in school, we should just go open them up. There's other issues also that really have to come to the front a little bit more so people understand why schools aren't completely open. Not that school boards don't want them to be opened, but there's a lot of issues. The difference with sports is, number one, they're outside. I think we have a lot of strategies in place so our students are safe. And this is part of the emotional health of students that we're looking for too, in that they are getting together, they are doing some of their usual and customary things. And that's what we're talking about. They're important to our students to be able to get to do, and we're able to check one thing off of our list. The other thing as far as staff goes, a lot of the people that are coming in are volunteers. They're, a lot of them are unpaid volunteers that we're lucky to have come in and do that. So it's not like, you know, we're taking staff from school, teachers from school that are not already here. We're not taking any of the staff away from our teaching positions. A lot of them are volunteers from our community that are thankfully coming in and doing this. So I think the two things are totally, totally different issues.
My perception on it, Ellen. All right, thank you Jenny. So we'll swing back around to spring sports after the COVID-19 Phase III presentation or update. Is that all right, Justin?
Sure.
All right, so moving on to committee reports. Scott, you have a finance report, manifest and budget transfers?
Sure, tonight you have a manifest in the amount of $998,994.94. Kind of a funky number, right? Of that, payroll, taxes and benefits are a little over $550,000. You'll note that in this particular manifest, we didn't have any payroll in terms of, not the big amount, because it fell between payroll periods. But we did make a large payment to Health Trust, which is our health and dental carrier. Special ed activity, we had quite a bit. And as you can see there, these are the providers that by and large are the ones that we've had to contract out because we could not have teacher, there were no teachers, or in some cases, speech and other services that are provided. We don't have those. Behavior, there's another one. So you'll see that we have a couple of companies, constellations, and Aspire who do behavioral consultants, where before we had those in-house. In terms of our general expenses, a couple of noteworthy ones. Skiavi leasing, that represents the final payment for the Glen Lake modular project. And Arbiter Trust, I always let you know that, Justin's here. We worked on a daily basis on that. That is for our officials, and we deposit those funds in pretty much every, you know, three times a year, sometimes more. But we try to put in an amount that will cover us for the next sports season. BMO Harris Bank, that is our purchasing card, and the vast majority of that went for video equipment that was grant funded, as well as additional PPE for here at the high school. And last but not least, the other noteworthy one is Gov Connection, and that was for items related to House Bill 1612, that's data security. And it was an E-rate, is paying 40% of that particular payment, so I wanted to let you know. And then last but not least, food service. We did have payments over $5,000 this time around, and that was for performance food at a little over $6,600. So are there any questions on this particular manifest?
Any questions, go ahead Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, just following up, because the Glen Lake payment is the final payment, have we been able to get any money back associated with the flub ups that occurred with the module?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And yes, so of the $70,597.84, it was supposed to be over 78, almost 79,000. And we took credits of over $8,000 to address that. So that paid for, we had to hire Stan Tech to oversee some of those issues, so that was there. We also included in, we had a storage unit, which we had to get. So all those things, we took as a credit off of that Skiavi bill.
Great, great job on that, Scott, and to the administration.
Please, Eric.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Scott? All right, we'll need a motion to approve the manifest. Go ahead, Ellen.
Move that we approve the manifest of March 1st, 2021, in the amount of $998,994.94.
Thank you, do I have a second? By Jenny, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Okay, Scott?
And then the second one, I bring before you tonight a budget transfer. And essentially, this is also Glen Lake related. So when we applied for, we proceeded, I should say, with the Glen Lake project, this was, you know, on the heels of us getting that disparity, fiscal disparity aid. And we did not budget for additional utilities, essentially. And this particular modular, everything is electrical, meaning that it's the air conditioning, the heating, and obviously the lights and everything. All of that is electric. So with that, I'm projecting that we're going to need about $20,000 of cost for electricity for this school year for that modular to run it. So I'm taking that from our property insurance line, which came in under budget, and that will square away that account for us. But I just wanted to also let you know that even next year, I think we're going to be shy on electricity for that. From what I can see, in the winter months, we're going to have about a $3,000 bill to run that portable, because it's the heat piece of it. And then in the non-heating season, it'll probably drop down to under $2,000-ish. And then if we use it in the summer for summer school, and we have the air conditioning running, it's going to go back up to like three. So just so you're aware.
Thank you, Scott. So we need a motion to approve this transfer?
I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of $20,000 from the said line item to the expected line item.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Jenny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Do you have anything else, Scott? You're good? All right, moving on to budget committee report, Jared?
There is no, or has been no meeting since the last time we met. The budget council will probably meet after the election.
Okay, great, thank you, Jared. Policy review, we have not met yet, but we have a meeting next Monday, March 8th at 5:30, which is a remote meeting. Jenny, C and E?
C and E has not met either. We will be meeting on March 8th at 7:00, and it will be a remote meeting as well.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to speak to that, because I haven't, I know that MC hasn't had a chance to speak with Jenny about this. I have encouraged MC that I would like her to cancel the C and E meeting. Typically, that's the meeting where the principals present.
Yes.
Kind of an overview of the year, and it's typically one of the best meetings of the year. They're very busy right now with planning for moving to the next phase of reopening, so that might be something that I would encourage the committee to consider. I did tell MC today that my preference would be to cancel that meeting and do the presentation at a later point in time. And I'm sorry, I apologize for kind of surprising you with this, but that was something that I surprised her with today, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's just, I think at this point, they're working really hard on getting ready for the next phase of reopening. And for their ability to pull together the presentation, I think will be compromised. So I would recommend that we.
I understand, we can cancel them.
Yeah, thank you.
Have it at another time.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
All right, thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So consistent with a lot of the things that we're doing, I want to just give a high-level overview, and some of these I don't want to get into an awful lot of detail or specificity. But I've been speaking quite a bit with the high school, and I'm not projecting, not yet, sorry, so I didn't want to, you're not missing anything. And speaking with Mr. McBride and the high school administration, I'm in full support of moving forward with a full complement of our senior activities. So we're talking about things like a COVID-safe prom, we're already talking and planning graduation, some of those end-of-year type events that, again, thanks to Adam and GTV, we did a great job with things like baccalaureate, and scholarship nights, and the senior athletic banquet, and, you know, all of those kinds of things that historically had been done in person. But I wanted the board to know, when we get a little closer, we'll bring more information to the board for your consideration and your approval. And there'll be some questions about, do we do a prom just for seniors? Do we try to do something on a smaller scale for juniors? So we're in the early stages of those things, but I did want the board to know that we're talking about them, we're planning them. I've had a few parents reach out to me. I want everyone to know I support being able to do something safe, to, you know, recognize our kids and have some of those end-of-year celebrations and rituals that are really important. But we need to obviously do them in a safe way and not have circumstances that potentially involve the spreading of the virus.
Yeah, go ahead.
A question with regard to graduation, whether COVID's here or not, I, okay. Are we thinking of going to SNA's or going back to the stadium?
I think we're looking to go back to the stadium. So SNA's being indoors, I'm not particularly interested in exploring that. I thought the Fisher Cat venue was spectacular. Again, here's the guy who did the majority of the planning for that graduation event. Justin did a great job, worked really closely with Fisher Cats. I think he would say that they were, you know, really professional, very responsive. We were very impressed, and there were fireworks.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, if they're.
Wasn't it less expensive?
In fact, it was quite a bit less expensive, so.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I think at this point, you know, we don't want to give away too much, but certainly Fisher Cat Stadium was a great event last year, and we would likely be moving forward.
Do we know when we need to book that?
We're already in talks with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and by we, more specifically, I mean Mr. Huff.
Okay, thank you.
I mentioned last meeting that our recommendation would be to get the building committee going again in the month of April. I wanted to inquire if the board would like us to put that as sort of a planning discussion, perhaps on our next agenda. I think with Mr. Stetson's departure, it might be a chance for you to take a look at the structure of the organization. Do you want to meet in person? Do you want to meet on Zoom? Do you want to use breakout rooms? So I think we should have some of those conversations. And then we're also going to need to reach out to our volunteers that were on the building committee.
We have the whole group.
And see who still is interested in participating, and go from there. So if it's to the board's pleasure, I'd like to recommend that we put that on one of our next agendas.
So that the board can have a discussion?
I think you should. I think you should, I think you should have some discussions about, you know, how big, what the structure is, do the three subcommittees still make sense? Are you going to meet in person, if you're going to do it remote? Do you need us to facilitate the remote meetings? Do board members want to do that? So I just think all of those pieces, Scott and I would like to get a little clarity on that. Similarly, I've got a memo that's almost ready to go to the stipend committee, that we're going to get them back together in the April timeframe as well.
April?
April, that's what we're going to shoot for, Jenny. I mentioned, I think, last meeting that we're looking to do a presentation in the month of May, and this actually may align with that traditional principal C and E presentation. But I've asked Mrs. Barry to work on a presentation to answer the question, how are our students doing, and how do we know? So we have some assessment metrics, as well as some more anecdotal kinds of things, but I'd like to have a presentation in the month of May. I've mentioned a couple of other things. We're continuing discussions about the evolution of public education. What do we keep? What do we get rid of? What gets thrown overboard that's become obsolete? So some of those discussions are ongoing. I mentioned remedial supports for all, we're working on planning for next year. I wanted to let everyone know that I participated in a school funding webinar last week with the commission that was formed. It was interesting that it was a very interactive, it was kind of a small group, so we actually had a lot of discussions. I wanted to let the board know if you're interested. They're doing three more sessions, one on March 10th, one on March 15th, and one on March 25th. If you have any interest, I can send the information to you if you want to let me know.
Is this the same discussion three more times, or?
I, I'm not entirely sure. They scheduled three more sessions. So essentially what they did was they provided a brief overview of the commission's report, which is available online. It's a pretty long, detailed report. I presented the summary findings for you, but, you know, again, school funding, this is one of the topics that we need to fix in this state. And communities like Goffstown and New Boston continue to get short-changed. So you've got charter schools that are getting around $7,400 per pupil, we get $3,700 per pupil. So there are incredible inequities, and a community like Goffstown continues to be hurt by how schools are funded, which by the way, I believe is unconstitutional still. But I digress, as I often do on the topic, I apologize. Kindergarten registration has changed. We're doing it online now through a new portal and. We're doing it online now through a new portal in Power School, where parents are able to essentially conduct the entire process electronically. They're able to upload documents and verification. This has been a big project. Betsy Murdock has done a great job, but we're trying this as a pilot for kindergarten, and we would hope to, again, we don't need to do things the same traditional ways that we have in the past. There are so many ways that we can be more efficient and make things better for the experience for our parents, and that's what we're trying to do. If we can be more efficient and give better customer service to our parents, that's what we're striving to do. I wanted to let the board know that I've had a number of requests for foreign exchange student consideration for next year already. So I think it's probably a little premature, and I've shared with people that at this point, I think we need to hold fast and see what the numbers do. We need to see if and when individuals under the age of 16 might be eligible for vaccination. So I think that there's more to come, but I wanted to let you know I've had inquiries already. State assessment planning is in full swing. I think I've shared with you that we are doing the full complement of assessments. The state, at this point, we're anticipating them reducing the participation threshold. Historically, that's been 95% that the state expects to, of students to participate. We believe this year, because, and remember, some schools are still fully remote. They haven't been in school yet. You're probably aware that Governor Sununu put forth a requirement that all students have to have at least two days in school starting next week. You know, obviously, we already meet that and did all winter when a lot of schools didn't. So, but Mrs. Barry and her team have been planning and are ready to move forward with the assessment, as we always are. So those, I'll save the COVID updates when we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that would be it for my report this evening.
All right. Ellen, go ahead.
Were, am I correct, we're only going to be doing the state assessments? We're not doing NWEA, or?
At this point, we are anticipating doing the state assessments. We've done some targeted NWEA for some of our at-risk students that we've continued to benchmark, but we have not done as much wide-scale assessment as we normally
I was trying to figure out how we're supposed to do the, all these tests
Yeah, and it really
in two days.
My preference has been that since time is so precious, continuing to assess might not be the best use of our time. I'd rather teach and interact and engage with kids.
Anyone else, questions for Brian? All right, seeing none, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
We're going to go into old business. So we are doing second read policies. We did the first read, we did questions and answers, so tonight is making motions to move these three policies forward. So the first one is DJB-A, purchase procedures credit card.
I move approval.
By Ellen?
Of DJB-A.
Okay, you make a motion to, I didn't hear you motion. Did you get?
Oh, to approve policy DJB-A.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? By Retta? Okay, any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous. The next one is policy EEAA, that was use of video and audio systems.
I'll move approval of policy EEAA.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? By Retta? Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. We're unanimous, Mr. Nice. Okay, the last one is JFAB, admission of non-resident students and tuition.
I'll move approval of JFAB.
All right, thank you. Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny? Thank you, Ginny. Any other questions? Yes?
Just statement, I will not be voting for this, as stated when we originally looked at it. I believe that this will lead to truancy for our seniors that their parents have moved out of the district and could cause other hardships with their learning, so I will be voting no for this policy change.
Thank you, Jared. Any else, thing else? Okay, I'll do roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
No.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So it's one no, and the rest are yes, it passes. All right, thank you, guys. So now we're up to phase change update.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to start with just a review of the numbers, as we typically have done. The numbers in all of the elements that we're looking at continue to trend in a positive direction, so again, I think this is all very positive news at this point with respect to COVID cases. I hope everyone can see that okay.
Can't see the highlighted red or what the information is?
I can make it a little bigger, and I'll, how about I read it, Jared? And I'm not sure what GTV, what Broden can get or not get, but I'll just, I'll do it, I'll do it auditorily. At this point, Hillsborough County is 285 per 100,000. Remember, anything above 100 is considered substantial community spread. We were as high, I mean, we all remember where we were over the winter, right? So at this point, 285 looks really positive, in my opinion. Forty-eight current cases in Goffstown, which is a case count of 265 per 100,000. New Boston's sitting at 14, which is 242 per 100,000, with a testing positivity rating below 5% of 4.6. So again, as I've shown in the past, the chart that the state has recommended we continue to use is to look at two elements of school community transmission, one being the testing positivity rating, which in this case would be considered in the minimal category, and the number of new infections would be in the red. So the model tells us to take the higher of the two, which would be substantial, and then the level of school impact, and this is no different than what I shared with you last week. So again, I'm not going to probably go into as much specificity, but I would consider our transmission at the medium level, as we've had, I think we're up to 187 cases thus far. We have had three clusters and continued positive cases. Absenteeism has not been a problem for us, so that's not been a factor or a variable. Staff capacity remains at critical. I do hope to be shifting more to the left in the strained category. And again, there's a little bit of arbitrary nature to this, but I continue to go through and show you what the data is, so I'll do that in just a second. Space is the other factor that I have continued to reference. Glen Lake would be in the yellow, Bartlett and Maple would be in the red, Mountain View would be in the yellow, and Goffstown High School would be in the green. So space is not a problem here at the high school. I would say Glen Lake and Mountain View are probably more realistically in that green to yellow type range. And then when we put this all together, and again, this is the model from the New Hampshire Bureau of Infectious Disease Control, we take the highest level of school impact and the highest level of community, and according to their own model, we should be fully remote. So again, the governor has removed that as an option, and interestingly enough, by the way, and this is something that I might respectfully disagree with the governor on, if we were to shift to remote for more than two days, we now would need the permission, the approval of the commissioner. So again, I might have a bit of an issue with that. We rely on local control. During the entire pandemic, superintendents have had to make a lot of decisions, and now to need an approval of that is something that's a little troubling to me. But be that as it may, the status of our staffing, and again, instead of saying staffing is critical, I give you the numbers every month, we're trending better. So you can see here that, and it's important to remember, February had one less school week, so there, that's a factor in this. But our ability to fill professional positions, our fill rate was 93, so that's the best that we've had. However, our support staff continues to be really problematic. So support staff, we're only able to fill at about 48%. And remember, we're pulling support staff to cover teachers. And when we increase the amount of time on campus for students, our ability to do that will go down. So our staffing will continue to be a real challenge for us. So where does that bring us? At this point, I will share with the board, and again, we just had a very long presentation two weeks ago, so I'm not going to rehash any of that. My beliefs continue to be that it's time to have kids in school for greater durations of time, and what I'm recommending the board at this point consider doing would be our agreement, our memorandum of understanding with our two unions requires us to provide 14 days' notice and to allow the unions the opportunity to respond to our intent to move or increase phases. So at this point, my recommendation to the board would be to take the action of directing me to notify the unions of our intent to move phases. That then will create a timeline and a process for our two unions to be able to respond, give feedback, have discussions with them, address any concerns that they may have, and to work through that process. That would be my first recommendation. My second recommendation, and the entirety of our ability to have increased students on campus is entirely predicated on the approval of moving away from six-foot distancing. So in order to have more kids in school, more time, we need to move to a three-to-six-foot model as opposed to strictly six-foot. I will tell you, all adults, we will continue to have six feet apart. The transmissibility of adults is very much a concern, as we have seen in the couple of clusters, two of the clusters that we had. But at this point, we have not seen any transmission from students to teachers out of all the cases that we've had. And as we shared again last week in the presentation, I do want everyone to know that this decision of going from six-foot spacing to three-to-six-foot spacing is not something that we entered into without a lot of thought, a lot of research, a lot of hard work, that we went into and really looked at this and evaluated the data, the science, the literature, the studies that have been available. And you saw the presentation at your last meeting. From my position, the safety that we're able to ensure moving to three-to-six feet as opposed to staying at the six-foot level would be my recommendation. Now, I will tell you that I do have a tentative prospective timeline. My focus would be primary-age children first, so I would be looking at K-1, 2, with those students being the first batch that would be back in. And what that would look like at this point, when we factor in the number of students who are fully remote, we would be looking to get the current hybrid students in five days a week. So anyone who wants to stay remote gets to stay remote. So if some of the public comment that we received, other information that we've heard from families that made the choice for their family to stay fully remote, we want to honor that. And in fact, the governor required us to do that. I might subject that that's a violation of the state constitution as an unfunded mandate, but I'll reserve that comment for another day. But, so we would keep the current remote students and the ability to remain remote, but when we get to the point, about 20% of our kids are fully remote. So if you think about, take 20% of the population out of the school, now I've got 75 to 80% of kids, that's phase three. So that would allow us for our kids to be back in five days a week. Now, I do recommend that we continue to plan, we continue to work with our reopening teams that have been meeting at the building level, and they're figuring out the logistical pieces. Public comment that we received this evening, lunch and snack is one of the biggest things that we're contending with. We have plans figured out for that, so we'll continue to work on that at the school level. We'll give more details as we get into sort of the nuts and bolts. But my recommendation would be that we start with K-1, 2, followed shortly by 3 and 4, and probably about the same time, 5th and 6th grade would be included in that. And then 7th and 8th in high school, we would have at a little bit of a later point in time. I do have more concerns, as I'm sure all of you do, with high school students' transmissibility as opposed to our younger children. We're certainly not seeing that spread between kids. We have seen that between kids at the high school. So I'm hesitant to give the board any specifics around dates, because we need to allow that union process to proceed. I need to make sure that they feel that they've had the opportunity to weigh in, that we've had appropriate discussions, and that needs to happen. But my request would be to notify the unions that we're intending to move phases, to start that timeline with them, and I would, Ellen, this was the motion that I think you were looking to make at the last meeting, I would recommend the board proceed with a three-to-six-foot spacing as opposed to just the six-foot spacing. Now, I will say that after we've gone through the timeline with our associations, and we've given them the opportunity to give input, that's when I would come back with the real detailed, concrete plans. I, and again, as I said, I have a draft scheduled with dates for all of these different moves, but I'm hesitant to share those until after we put the two unions on notice and allow them the opportunity to respond. So at this point, I do think it's the time to do this. I think that our numbers are trending absolutely. I think last week to this week was a 12% drop in New Hampshire. We keep doing that, that's incredibly encouraging. Before long, we're going to have, we'll have windows open in classrooms again, which will be terrific. We'll have kids back outside more, and I just, I don't disagree with a lot of what was shared from public comment. And I think public comment also captured very precisely the conflict, because you've got parents that are saying, geez, there's, you know, there's, we're 60% through the school year. We only have, I think it's 13 or 14 weeks of school left. We're almost done. So could there be an argument to stay the course the remainder of the year? I think there could be, but I would say that I think the benefits of kids being back in school more and more consistently, the benefits for families are there, and I think they outweigh the risks at this point. Everything comes with risk during a global pandemic. Teachers have not been vaccinated. When are we going to be vaccinated? I don't know. We've continued to be told by the governor that it'll happen in the March to early April time period. That's pretty soon. We've got 12,500 doses of the Johnson &amp; Johnson are being brought in, and the state, I think this was announced publicly today, if not, I hope I'm not breaking their thunder, but they're doing a vaccination clinic at the Speedway in Loudon for 12,500 people to get the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that had been part of the backlog for Phase 1B. So we'll move into Phase 2A, and the board knows, I've shared with you, that we've been working for the last probably two months at this point with the Manchester Public Health Department. All of our nurses are either trained or are in the process of demonstrating their competency to be able to do all of the COVID administration. Chief Allard and Chief McDonald, our two fire chiefs from Goffstown and New Boston, are going to have their paramedics, their EMTs, be part of this, so we, I think we're going to be really well-positioned, and we've worked very, very closely with Phil Alexakos, who's the director of the Manchester Public Health Department. So I think our teachers, because we're looking to do our own clinic on-site, will hopefully be at the front of the line. And what we don't want is we've got 700 people to be vaccinated. The idea that we're going to tell 700 people, just go online and schedule it and figure it out yourself, seems a little crazy for me. Let's toast it ourselves, have everybody here. We have no idea whether we'll get the Pfizer, the Moderna, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson. I think for different reasons, I could argue one of those might be better or worse, but you know, at this point, I would say we're going to take what we get, we're going to be thankful and appreciative. I know that those of us who are in and out of schools all the time will be relieved, that we don't feel like we have the personal threat of being exposed, even though that, again, we've had no student-to-teacher transmission, and teachers and administrators who were able to distance from adults haven't had exposures. So at this point, Heather, that's as far as I would go. I do see this as a process that'll unfold for the next several weeks, and I would say And I would say, after we give the two-week notification to our two unions, that would happen tomorrow morning. If the board is in concurrence with the recommendation, then we would proceed with them and continue with our planning. And after we've given them the timeline for them to respond, we would bring out the full sort of schedule of recommended. But again, I want you to understand, my focus is younger children first, and then proceeding with caution with our older middle school kids and our high school kids.
So, oh, okay. Ellen, go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. Is it, will it be optional for those currently in hybrid to go full remote?
It will be optional.
Okay. So they have that option?
They do. That's more complicated at the high school than at other levels. That does come with complications for us because we don't have as deep a staff reserves as perhaps other districts do. But yes, and in fact, we did parent surveys for Glen Lake, the middle school, and the high school. We didn't do surveys for Bartlett and Maple Ave because we're just not finished the planning yet, that I didn't want to ask parents before we had really had the sufficient time for the planning involved with this. I also will let the board know that we're proceeding with furniture orders. We've gone over the years very purposely and very philosophically towards more kind of table as opposed to singular desks. We want kids to be more collaborative, working in partners and some of those kinds of things. We will be looking to purchase more singleton desks. We're not going to buy anything that we won't use post-pandemic. So that's been kind of the one thing that Mr. Gross and I had told all the principals. And I want, you know, with the exception of Plexiglas, because, you know, beyond the pandemic, the use of Plexiglas, someone's going to come up with something brilliant because there's going to be a lot of Plexiglas. But we're not looking to buy any furniture that we wouldn't use post-pandemic. But yes, they could choose to shift to fully remote. The first glances of our survey data indicate that very few people would do that.
Are you set, Ellen?
Well, I saw other hands up.
Yeah, do you have another question?
If I'm understanding what you're saying, tonight, we could make a motion that yes, go ahead with the three-to-six-foot distancing, enabling more of our children to come in for five days a week.
But, but I do want to just be clear, if I may. That's not what you're approving tonight. You're not approving kids are coming in five days. You're approving that we're putting our two unions on notice.
Okay.
Per our memorandum of understanding, there's a window of time for us to increase students in school phase change, if you will, that they have a process to be able to respond to us.
So that's what you need from us?
Yes.
And that's going to take two whole weeks?
I would, I would say our duration within the MOU is a two-week notification, and they respond to us. I don't want to get too much into more detail, but it could be that the unions could request other remedies, they could request other processes. So I don't want to speak prematurely.
I'm just thinking of timeframe and how far down the road are we at getting these kids back in? And it sounds like we're going to be into April.
I'm not, that's not.
Not necessarily?
Not necessarily. So I, again, I don't want to, you know, kind of get too far ahead of ourselves.
Okay. I just would hate to open it all, I mean, I want it all open, don't get me, and then the next week, we're off for April break.
Right.
That's going to be here before we know it.
Yeah, I think the timing will be appropriate. I think people will appreciate it. I think people need time to plan. I think families that have made childcare arrangements need to have, you know, to be able to notify their providers if they're not going to have their kids in. And again, we want to do this, as we've done everything else, very methodically. What we don't want to do is start to increase time and then have to go full remote because we don't have staffing. We start to have transmission occurring within the building. So I want to be purposeful and strategic with the focus being on our youngest kids as the earliest ones to be fully back in.
So we, tonight, one of us could make a motion that we enter into notifying our unions.
Of our intent.
Of our intent to change phases.
Yes.
That's all you needed tonight. And then at our next board meeting, no, not at our next board meeting?
No.
The next board meeting is less than two weeks.
Right.
Like if he talks to the unions tomorrow.
Your next board meeting would not have, so if I notify the associations tomorrow, they have 14 days with, within the MOU to respond. We have to give them two weeks' notice. And I would ask you not to take an action to, to make a motion to move phases. I think we, again, we couldn't have done any of this without our great teachers and support staff, so to not give that process, I think the time that.
I understand that, but then I'm thinking that it's going to be four weeks before we make a decision unless the word gets back together before then.
It could be March 16th, and then we don't have another board meeting until April 5th.
Yeah.
So we could talk about having a meeting in between.
Yes.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
An additional board meeting just to talk about this.
Yeah, so what I might recommend is precisely that. So I think that we're probably going to want to revisit having a board meeting. We have contested races, so we need to make sure we allow time for recounts for board elections that are happening next week. So we need to be mindful of that. But Ellen, I do think that the timeline, I think it will work. And, you know, again, we need to allow this process the time that it needs.
I understand.
But I do think, you know, in the later March, early April timeframe would be, if everything was, goes according to plans, would be kind of the time.
That we have a lot of kids back in.
And again, I'm speaking very hypothetical.
Okay.
Without having gone through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Jared had his hand up first. Hang on, Ginny.
Just the converse of what Ellen said. We talked about people moving from hybrid going to remote. Is there going to be an opportunity for those parents that wanted remote or started remote with the expectation to go back to the classroom, that they would be able to go in?
Yeah, and in fact, Jared, we asked parents that question, and we had more parents that were interested in doing that than were interested in going from hybrid to remote. So, you know, I think, you know, we're a year into this thing, you know, and we've all adjusted and changed our lives. Things have been challenging and, you know, but I think at this point, we know what the risks are. We know how to mitigate the likely transmission of the virus. And if we make good choices and continue to have appropriate expectation mitigation factors, I think parents recognize that now.
Are you set, Jared?
I have a statement afterwards, but I think that I want to get people get through the questions before I make a statement.
Okay. Ginny?
That sounded like a broken record, but any news on our testing that we're supposed to be able to get? Because I think that would help with our process of opening schools.
You mean COVID testing?
We were able to have.
For COVID testing.
COVID testing.
Yeah, so that's, and in fact, Terry and I had a conversation about this last, last meeting out in the parking lot on the way out. We were told earlier on that the state was getting 400,000 rapid tests that were going to be available to school districts. For whatever reason, that never happened. Testing could be something, if I were to focus on testing, I would first focus on adults.
Yes.
So I would focus on adults. The next step would be to focus on high school kids. I will tell you that the testing is expensive. And so the, some of the tests that we were looking at originally were in the kind of $60 to $120 range each. So originally, I was interested and hot to trot to buy tests to have on the shelf in our nurses' offices, so that if our nurses had kids come down that looked symptomatic, that instead of saying to the parent, you need to come pick your kid up and you need to go take them to get a test, that we would say, we have the ability to test your child here, you know, would you consent to us doing that? We haven't done that yet. The cost associated with the testing is significant. And to do something as a, you know, a whole-school type screening model would be a lot of money, I think. But testing is something that I think is a tool that we should have, that we haven't had yet. And I don't know, Terry, if you want to share any, any thoughts or experience, I think Terry is a really great resource with respect to this. But just so far, we've not been given tests. You're starting to see some of these saliva-at-home tests. I do need to let you know that many of those are sort of advisory-only. They're not a medical grade, it's not a diagnostic test. So if you have one of those and it tests positive, your next step would be to go get a PCR test on your own. So I, you know, I admire the University of New Hampshire's model of how they're testing all students and all staff twice a week. I think that's spectacular. But obviously, they have the capacity, they have the labs, they're doing it themselves. They've built a, you know, a terrific program. But testing for us has been something that we had hoped would be a better tool than it is now.
Yeah. There's certainly some regulatory challenges, both from a health department standpoint, so NFPA, who you're testing, what you're doing. The tests certainly aren't inexpensive. And who does the testing and whether they're being used on adults or children, that varies. So there's a lot of different regulations around that. It's not to say it's not feasible, but there's a lot of things that need to be investigated in that process. There is, as you're mentioning around the off-the-shelf, there is a new system from LabCorp, it's Pixel, which is basically a home test that they originally were, you could go on, sign up, and they'd send you the kit at your house, send it back the next day, two days. I think I read today that they're partnering with Walgreens, so it may be available on the shelf type of system. But again, they're, last I checked, they're in the $100, $125 range here, one of those tests. It's a PCR test that is covered by most insurances, just like you'd go for another test. But for the rapid tests, they're not PCR, they're antigen tests or antibodies, a good frontline, but there are some, I think you'd have to talk to the health department and the laboratory commission in the state to really understand who and what you can do. It's not, it's not a good idea, it's not feasible. There's just some other things that you have to take into account.
Thank you, thank you, Terry. I know Ginny had her hand up, and then Ellen. Go ahead, Ginny.
Yep. I, when you speak to the, our unions, would you just, and I hate to even bring this up, but where we are looking to go forward in Phase 3, because we feel that we're okay in doing that now, and other school districts in New Hampshire have just gotten the kind of, you now have to be in school at least two days. Would you check with our unions and see how many people are going to have to take absences because of childcare, because of other things, so that we know ahead of time what our staffing implications are going to be?
Yeah, that, the staffing implications are a great point, Ginny. And we've heard from, I think, a very small number, but staff know that we've been planning for a phase change. So we've heard from a couple of staff members that have had concerns. Childcare is a real issue. And so, for example, over the Thanksgiving to end of January time period, we had a lot of staff members who had childcare challenges because their schools went full remote. So I think we're starting to see the opposite of that now, where, you know, I don't know what Governor Sununu's intent will be, but I'll tell you that looking at the national news, other states have already made requirements that schools have to be open five days in person. So those sort of gubernatorial edicts are already happening within the US. So I have no idea, my guess, again, would be local control. You know, these are local decisions by the local school board, and this isn't something that the governor or the commissioner ought to be requiring. But that is starting to play out across a number of states right now. But yes, the staffing implications.
It'd just be good to know ahead of time, so that we can plan.
And again, go back to the beginning. You know, we hustled and worked really hard to develop a childcare program on-site for our, for our teachers. Mr. Gross and I, we worked with the YMCA to do all this. We had very little participation. So at the end of it, we didn't have as much of an impact as we anticipated. But, you know, I, again, I hope our employees know that we were doing everything we could to take care of them and to take care of their families.
Right. Are you set?
Yeah.
Okay. You're welcome. Ellen, go ahead.
Just one more. As we all know, there are a number of our children who are suffering socially, emotionally from what's been going on in their lives, whether it's pandemic or otherwise. Are we prepared to address those, the needs of those children with this, again, big change in their routines, being, again, every day with their peers, but you can't really get too close? And the rigors of the daily schedule and routine, I mean, some of these are little kids. I mean, the first graders have never been in first grade. I mean, that kind of thing.
Well, and some of these groupings, if you think about an A-B rotating hybrid cohort, the children haven't been together. So they've been with their group of 12.
Yeah.
But when they're, you know, now going to be with their group of 18 or 20, or whatever the number is, when we remove, you know, some of the remote-only students, that will be kind of like the beginning of school again. So a couple of things, Ellen. The first piece I would say is, remember, we've offered priority return so that families that had unique needs were given additional time through the entire duration of the school year. So we have, we have some students that are on-site five days a week and have been really most of the year.
Oh, that should be mitigated. Okay.
The other piece, Ellen, is the board will recall pre-pandemic that we were struggling with elementary children that had really intensive emotional and behavioral needs. I will tell you that that has continued to a very small degree, but by increasing time, I'm anticipating this will, again, be problematic. So actually, interestingly enough, this is a task that I've charged our special ed director with in working with the facilitators to identify the needs, the programmatic infrastructure, professional development, space requirements. Our elementary schools are small and overcrowded. And when you have kids that are dysregulated in a small space with too many kids, they elevate. It's not surprising. And as we increase kids on time on campus, there will be unintended consequences. So yes, and in fact, Dr. Dolof and the special ed facilitators will be meeting with us, our principal group, this Thursday to continue the conversation. So we've been talking about this for several weeks. As we planned a phase change, this has been part of that.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question.
Please.
Because I've heard it from other families, and it was also in public comment. And this is more for the high school, which I think is very different from the elementary. Any of our students that are hybrid and remote did not work for them or is not an option? Are they going to be allowed flexibility to stay in school maybe three days instead of five? Is there, and I'm just talking about the high school.
So this, this is something that unfortunately will be challenging for us to be able to do. And in terms of the work responsibilities on teachers, if, certainly if we have circumstances that kids need to quarantine, then classes, groups of classes, whatever it may be, will have to make that shift back to a remote period of time during quarantine. But I do want to be clear, our ability to move forward with this proposed phase change, we will not have the ability to give multiple choices. So I want to stay just two days? Nope. You're either going to be remote, or you're going to be back in. Again, this is something that we'll bring to the board for your consideration. I've heard from high school kids and some families that have said they kind of like the schedule that they have, and they're maybe working two days a week when they're not required to be on campus all day. And so I think for some families, this will be a shift. But I do want to be clear, so the one public comment that said, I want to stay where I am, I hear you, I recognize. recognize that, but if we move forward, the expectation is those kids would be on campus because it's not, it would be an increased burden on the teachers to be able to provide both of those platforms.
Yeah, I was just talking more about the person had a medical condition, so I was just wondering if there would be some flexibility.
Yeah, I think the flexibility, I, I would say right now is, is probably not going to be the choice level that parents may want. But again, these are all hard decisions, right?
No, I know.
So, you know, and-
It is hard.
And for every opinion that you have, I, I promise you that there are equal opinions on both sides of the issue. So, you know, it's, it's fascinating to me that when I receive input from parents, I not surprisingly get the total opposite, you know, input from parents, that some think, you know, you should 100% do that, some think you should 100% not do that. And everyone has good arguments and everyone and their family circumstances are unique. And we all, we appreciate that. And again, changing phases comes with risk. It comes with risk. Until our teachers are all vaccinated, it comes with risk. This pandemic is not going away. Until everyone who's eligible wants a vaccine, remember, no one under the age of 16 is getting vaccinated at least anytime in the near future. 16. So you're talking about juniors and seniors in high school are the only ones of our kids that are going to be able to be vaccinated. I know that Pfizer is doing trials now down to the age of 12, so that'll be the next, the next group that hopefully children from 12 to 16 might get approved. And then, you know, will there be another? I have no idea, does the Johnson and Johnson vaccine start to be trial tested on younger children? I think so much of this is so unknown, as everything has been for the last year. So, you know, but the ability for us to do, to choose hybrid, full in, or full remote is not going to be there. And I do want to be clear that if and when we make these shifts, that people will be required to do that. And then it will be, I think the number will be small, but there likely will be circumstances.
Right, okay, thank you. Jared, go ahead, I know you've been waiting.
No, thank you, Ms. Chair. Brian, I, I know that you stated that you did not want to put a schedule out, or at least a soft schedule, and that, that's a little bit concerning, because as a, as a, as a parent, you know, there are those obligations that we have at work. So as we look at transitioning to, okay, now I need to be in work full time, I, I don't need to be in work, I, I just, I'd like to understand from a, a goal line, what would be a date you would expect to say, okay, this is where we, we expect kids to be in five days a week if everything works out? And the reason why I say that is if it's too late and we're talking June 1st, that's 13 days. Is 13 days of teaching in person really sufficient for the disruption that we'll have from, from hybrid? Or is it from May 3rd, which is right after?
It's, well, and again, I, I think if you, if you look at what I said, I, I didn't want to commit to a date, but I'm, I'm saying that in the late March, early April timeframe is, is what I'm targeting.
For what?
To start or for, okay, okay.
Well, it all depends on-
I got you, I got you.
Yeah, I, so I, I guess I would say to the board, if you'd like me to give you dates, we can go into non-public and I'd be happy to give you dates in non-public. I have a whole schedule, I'm just, again, I'm not ready to release that, and it's contingent upon the process with our two unions. So I recognize that parents need time to plan, but I also couldn't be more grateful to our teachers and support staff and don't want to diminish the process that we agreed to through that MOU by saying, you know, Balki's already got dates, he's already going and, you know, he's not going to listen to us. I don't want that to be the case.
No, I, and I am 100% in agreement with that, Brian. I just don't want to say, be in a position where we're running out the clock to the end of the year.
Oh, I, that is very clearly not my intention.
If, if that's your intention, your stated intention, then that's good enough for me.
Yeah, and, and like I said at the last meeting, I want kids back in school. I think kids need to be in school. So no, this is, and, and if, if it was June, then that would be crazy even, even doing at that point. It has to be enough of the school year left that it makes good and reasonable sense. And I think, you know, a, a later March, early April time period for several of those groupings to occur, I think makes good sense.
Thank you.
But again, if, if the board wanted to talk more, I think it would be appropriate discussion in more detail in non-public.
Yeah, we have to let the unions do their job.
If I could, I just want to also, we had a lot of discussions about the size of classrooms. I spent at least an hour and a half with Brian and other administrators talking about furniture and how we can get these kids into the classroom. So there's so many variables that we have to contend with. One is the availability to get this stuff, and I think we're, we're on that track, but if we go with a certain date and then a furniture order is two weeks delayed, what do we do? You know, so it's, it's, it's complicated, I don't think, and so I, I just wanted folks to also know that, is that what we have in a lot of our classrooms are six-foot tables that cannot accommodate even three to six-foot distancing because the classrooms are 500 to 750 square feet. So that's why we're doing all of this, but it's going, there's some lead time that's involved to, to get it in.
I'll make a motion.
Um, hang on one second, Scott, are you set?
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have anything they want to say, questions, comments? So you need two motions, one, for us to approve going from six feet to three to six feet distancing, and two, to take our proposal to the unions and see, give them their time to-
With, to notify the unions of our intent to change phases. Yes, precisely.
All right, go ahead, Jared. Oh, did you have a question?
To say that the adults are six feet.
Adults always six feet.
Right, yes.
And that I won't, we can't waiver on.
No.
The only circumstance that that's not the case Ginny, is if we have intensive special needs students who might require two adults, but those people have all been given or have the opportunity to have Envo masks, which is a reusable N95 mask. We've done fit testing where they have to go under a hood and, and have that, the mask properly fitted. So those people that are in those unique circumstances already have the availability of more intensive PPE.
Right, okay. Jared, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend, to direct our administration to initiate terms of the MOU to be able to progress to the next phase of teaching, or of, of teaching, and to decrease our spacing from six feet to three to six feet for spacing.
Second.
You okay with that?
I am, I think that does it.
Okay. Ellen, you second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather? Yes. So before we move on, do you want to tentatively set up another board meeting or wait till you hear back from them and then let me know and we can let board members know? How do you want to do that?
Well, let me look quickly at the schedule. So I'll notify them tomorrow.
Right.
That gives them until March 16th.
And we have a board meeting on the 15th, so maybe if you've heard something by then we can discuss, if not, then we'll-
Yeah, I mean, the, the two-week window i- is sort of that maximum, we, we have to give them that, that duration of time.
But you could hear from them sooner.
I could, and, you know, we could also look at potentially just changing the date. So it would be a little off schedule for people, but putting our, you know, next meeting maybe on the 17th.
Does New Boston have a meeting?
They, I don't believe they do, it's not on my schedule, Scott or Denise.
New Boston's?
On the 17th.
I'll tell you in a sec.
17th?
No, Denise said 24th, so.
Okay.
That, you know, that just could be an option, that maybe we just move the meeting from the 15th to the 17th. I, I, I think we can hold fast for now, you know, let's, let's see-
Well, just want to make sure we give board members time to arrange their schedules so that we have a call.
Well, I, I, could it be then we could just say tentatively for the 17th?
Does anybody have an objection for the 17th?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday?
So move the next scheduled school board meeting from the 15th to the 17th.
Tentatively, yeah.
Yeah, just, just as, FYI, as we know, we have the election.
Right.
Which would also require the sitting and, and we would be at the call of the, oh no, we wouldn't have to be at the call of the chair, because if we schedule it for the 17th, we'll be fine. Okay?
Yeah, and, and again, I don't know what kind of timeline our associations are going to want or need. And, and really, the, the two-week notification is for us before we move phases. So it, you know, I, I think-
So you want to just keep it on the 15th and then-
Why don't we keep it on the 15th for now, but if people could just maybe tentatively pencil in that we would maybe look for either the 17th or later in that week as a possibility? And we'll obviously notice it when we get closer.
Okay. Does everybody get that? Okay. So since we finished the phase change update, let's circle back to spring sports. Oh, Retta, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I just had a question, so we just, we just made this motion for our board, are, are we going to have to be in consensus with New Boston as well in order for all of this to happen, or how will that work?
Didn't they already do that last week?
No, they, so what, the status of New Boston is, New Boston has put their two unions on notice of the intent to move phases as well, and they have not, they will get a presentation next week that, I'm meeting with the New Boston unions this Wednesday, so I'll have a, a sense of where they find themselves and what questions or whatever next steps might be. So I would hope that the New Boston board would be in a position next week for us to give more definitive timelines. I would say changes would impact New Boston likely more than it would impact Goffstown. And really, the big thing would be busing. And if, you know, if you have a middle school student and you have an elementary school student, you probably want them to stay on the same schedule if you're a New Boston parent, but if your elementary kid is in more than your middle schooler, that might be okay with you. But if it was the opposite, that the younger kids were going to be home and the middle schooler might be in five days and there's no one to watch the younger child, I think that's where families would struggle. I do think New Boston would appreciate that you, that you raised that, Retta, but they haven't made any decisions. They've, at this point, they've basically made the same step that you just made.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just to follow up, if, if you, you're presenting the schedule to New Boston before our unions have had a chance to come back, will that be happening in non-public?
Can you say that again, please?
So if, if they're, if New Boston's in a position to hear your presentation of the schedule for return, that, that would happen prior to our, our unions?
But remember, New Boston's timeline, process, et cetera, can and likely will look different from, from Goffstown. They may not be, it, it may happen that they come close to aligning, but they may not be the same.
Okay.
And I think there were some other factors that New Boston is considering in, in their reopening committee's work.
All right, so as of right now, school board meetings, March 15th until we hear further.
Yep.
All right, so let's circle back to-
Athletics.
Athletics with spring. I do want to just make a statement, I had a child do winter sports and I thought Justin and his coaches did a fantastic job monitoring, keeping everybody safe, you know, it, I, I just thought it, they did a fantastic job with it. So I have full confidence that spring will be, will, will do great, and I think it's a good thing for our children, so. Does anybody have any comments, questions, make a motion?
What kind of motion do we need?
I can't hear you, Ellen.
What's the motion that we need to consider?
To move, to approve the spring sports.
Spring sports as presented?
As presented, and Brian will get back to us with updated flexibility stuff later on, once you have your meetings.
Yeah.
But it's not going to get less-
No.
Flexible.
No, no, I'd say that's a fair, fair statement.
I'll move that we approve the spring sports as presented.
Okay, is there a second by Terry? Is there any other discussion before I do roll call? Jared?
I'm just glad that I'll be able to vote in the affirmative for this with the hope that we are getting back to school. So thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anything else? All right, I'll do roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous.
How did Janelle?
Yes.
She said yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Justin.
I heard the same thing.
Thank you.
Keep us posted on how things go.
Well done.
All right, so we are-
Thank you, Mr. Hoff.
Who won the game?
Moving on to board authorization request. Board motion is needed to grant continued authorization to the superintendent under the superintendent's emergency operations plan for COVID-19 as a temporary regulation to policy EBCF, pandemic epidemic emergencies, and to grant the superintendent or his designated authorization to respond at his or her discretion to change in public health circumstances and to allow the superintendent the ability to modify or adapt school policy as needed until the next successful school board meeting. I have a motion.
So moved.
By Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Janelle, I already got Ginny. All right, roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous. Next one is a motion to grant the business administrator authorization to make payments out of sequence and to notify the board of such payments at the next scheduled school board meeting.
So moved.
By Jared, do I have a second? By Retta? I'll do roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're unanimous, so now we're on to school staffing.
School staffing, we have a, a few notifications of track changes. One was effective February 15th for Matt Govani, moving from bachelor's 30 to master, so congratulations to Matt. And effective July 1st, we have Kristen Pelchat, Antonella Cletto, Kate Erskine, and Michael Leonard, who are also moving, they're all moving from bachelor's to bachelor's 15, so congratulations to them. And for your approval, we have a retirement notification of Colleen Russo as a math teacher here at the high school, so congratulations to Colleen. We will miss her dearly.
Yes.
We need a motion, right?
We need a motion for-
We do, for the approval of the retirement. Will you please?
Okay, I move that we approve retirement of Colleen Russo. I'm assuming that's at the end of the school year?
Yes.
Do I have a second? By Retta? Okay, do a roll call. Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Retta?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.